Stand. I pledge allegiance
to the flag.
of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Sid.
Thank you.
Um, roll call by Board Secretary Sandy Vaughn, please.
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Here.
Jessica Fogarty.
Here.
Sid Hill.
Here.
Amy Johnson. Amy Johnson is not present. Teresa Lawson.
Here.
Kim Usleton.
Here.
And Pat Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we move on, I want to remind everyone to please state your name before you speak. Um, and, and do not worry about hurrying. We know it takes a minute for the, the microphone to open. So just take your time. That's not a problem. Please state your name. And when you're not speaking, if you'll keep your microphone closed, that should help with the feedback. Okay? Thanks everyone so much. Um, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for, to approve the agenda as presented?
Jessica Fogarty, so moved.
Sid Hill, second.
Okay, we have, um, uh, the motion by Jessica Fogarty and a second by Sid Hill. Thank you. Um, Sandy Vaughn, if you would please poll the board members.
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
It's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Um, do we have any individuals who would like to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? Seeing that there is no one, we will move on to consent agenda. A motion to approve the minutes from the January 19th meeting.
Jessica Fogarty, so moved.
Pat Welch, second.
Thank you. Sandy, if you will, please poll the board.
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to unfinished business. We have the 2021 budget adjustment. And that's going to be Dr. Stevens and Mr. Ray.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, earlier this semester, the state legislature passed a 2% raise for the spring semester for BEP certified personnel and nurses. The intent of this law was to include all TCS certified in this non-recurring, one-time increase in pay. We felt inappropriate to include all TCS personnel with the same recognition, which includes our classified staff members. We did request through ESER 2.0, $104,943 be used for our classified staff to receive this one-time increase in pay as the licensed or certified staff. Unfortunately, these COVID relief funds cannot be used in this manner as this one-time increase from the state legislature was not COVID-related and the ESER 2.0 funds are. Those funds must be COVID-related. So it is the administration's hope that you will approve a one-time increase for classified staff and certified staff above the BEP allotment matching the 2% increase for the spring 2021 semester provided by the state for BEP certified staff in the amount of $104,943.
Is there a motion to approve the one-time increase for classified staff and certi- certified staff above the BEP allotment matching the 2% increase for the spring 2021 semester provided by the state for BE certified staff in the amount of $104,943?
Sid Hill, so moved.
Thank you Sid. Second?
Teresa Lawson, second.
Thank you Teresa with a second. Mrs. Vaughn, if you'll please poll the board.
Sure, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Great. Thank you all so much. Very, very important to take care of all of our employees. And moving on to budget, Mr. Ray.
Thank you Chairperson Usleton. Um, uh, as we continue to move towards our FY22 budget, just a brief update. We have been paying close attention to the information coming out uh, related to the education portion of the governor's proposal for the 2021 budget or FY22. Uh, we continue to follow and will continue to follow the legislative session as well as information coming from the state Department of Ed regarding this next fiscal cycle. Uh, there seems to be additional information coming out daily, uh, changing daily and sometimes more than once a day. But, uh, we will typically not see our first BEP estimate until mid-April, which gives us a good, um, indication for what our FY22 fund should be, unless it's like FY21 where, um, we may back up and punt. But we'll continue to work through the needs and the potential projects that will be forthcoming, um, in the upcoming budget cycle. Chairperson Usleton?
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Are there any questions? There's still so much unknown and obviously we all will have many, many more questions as we move forward, but we're, we're waiting. There's a lot of being in the waiting mode, um, right now. Um, this happens every year, so nothing new. Okay, we are ready for building and grounds report. Pat Welch, please.
Yes ma'am. We have not met since our, uh, last meeting, but we will, Teresa, we'll need to have one in March before the board meeting. Um, but we do have several, uh, things to report on. One, the track radius drainage system that we've talked to several times about. The bids are due into Jason's office on March the 8th and we would anticipate hopefully awarding that project at the March meeting. I would invite everybody, uh, that has not seen the band room door and, and, and I'm one of those that have not and I plan to get down there soon. The, uh, the area that's opened up was a storage area that can now be used and the flooring there was really, carpet. It may have been the original. It was, and with just being used as storage, it was in horrible shape. And, uh, uh, I believe that, that, uh, Mr. Raisin informed me that that carpet will soon be changed out. And, um, that's when I would, I guess, Jason, if you let all the board members know when that carpet's changed, because it's, so that they can visit now. I'd rather them not see how bad it looks right now, but this, this is really going to be beneficial to the, to the band program. Orcott Winslow, that's going to do assessment of all of our buildings. Was it started at Bel Air today and anticipate that taking about three weeks to get all seven buildings. Uh, we've talked several times about, uh, being on a ceiling, uh, the parking lots. Each school being on a, on a ceiling cycle and, um, Ms. Lawson will be proud to know that there'd be three parking lots sealed, uh, during the spring break. And the last but not least item is what, is something that we need to take advantage of tonight. The, um, we've got several ditches in the system that have been deemed by the state wetlands. And, uh, as much as we'd like to, to, uh, to, to trim them and make them look more presentable, it's not, that's not going to be possible. The one at East Middle behind there that, that runs between the soccer field and the softball facility, um, it really is tough because you, they, there'd be more direct traffic between those two facilities if it wasn't for that drainage ditch. It's been treated as wetlands. We've had a citizen that's been able to, uh, that does that type of environmental work and he was able to get the state to change the designation of that being a wetlands. And we're going to be able to trim that and, and make it much more presentable. And at, at some point, we'll get some foot bridges over there and the, uh, the traffic between the two, uh, facilities will be much, much, much better. And, uh, I'm going to let Mr. Ray tell us what the bid is and, um, and hopefully our recommendation would be to, to accept it and get this project going on. And, uh, and it'll be, I saw several of you shaking your heads. Yes, it's going to be a, a nice aesthetic improvement, that's for sure. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Yes, um, we have identified two areas near the athletic fields at East Middle School that need to be addressed in an effort to improve the aesthetics and safety in these areas. Uh, there was an aerial picture provided to you to assist in this discussion. That area obviously is of East Middle and there are two areas that are designated. One in green is Area 1 and one in yellow is Area 2. I'll begin with discussion regarding Area 1. That is the green outlined portion of the aerial picture. This was the ditch area that, uh, Pat mentioned located between the softball field and soccer field that has grown up over the years with brush uh, and trash and other things. But recently, uh, the State Department of Environment and Conservation accepted the request and determinations of that drainage area, which allows us the opportunity to improve this area. And we will come back to that. Area 2 is identified in your aerial, in the yellow color. And this area is on the far side of, uh, the bleachers opposite of the press box at the soccer field. So away from the school, if you will. Uh, unmanaged growth near the fence on that side uh, has made it necessary to, to clean out and clear out this area as well. And so we thought we would take care of two birds with one bid, if you will. We recently accepted bids for the work in these two areas. Uh, and forgive me, but I'm going to read you, um, part of what we asked for, for the bids to be regarding. The requested work for Area 1 was to clear out the ditch of all debris, including concrete and blocks, brush and trees and any other obstacles in the ditch area. Dig out the stumps in the ditch area, haul debris from the worksite, grade the ditch, shape and widen the ditch to obtain proper drainage, grade, level, ground prep, rake and seed the grass in the ditch area. Straw the area to protect the seed from washing away before germination. And then the requested work for Area 2 was to clear out the fence approximately eight feet clear of the fence on the east side of the soccer field of all debris, brush, trees and any other obstacles. To level, ground prep, rake and seed the grass. Straw the areas and protect the seed, to protect the seed from washing away before germination. We had, uh, bids were available for 16 days. They resulted in only one response. We requested that the bidders, uh, break out their pricing between Area 1 and Area 2. The bid price for Area 1 came back at $10,970. The bid amount for Area 2, as specified, was $1,860. The bid, the bidder did offer an alternative bid for Area 2. We had asked for approximately eight feet clear of the fence to be cleared and worked. The alternative bid came in for 15 feet of clearing. And this would allow for the entire area from the fence to the gravel driveway. If you've been over on that side, you know, there's a gravel drive that, uh, takes up about half of that area over there. And this would allow that entire area from the fence to the gravel driveway to be cleared. These bids were submitted by Gary's Nursery and Landscaping. Mr. Gary Sisk is a reputable landscaper with a positive reputation and many years of experience. His alternative bid for Area 2 was in the amount of $2,980. I recommend entering into agreement with Gary's Nursery and Landscaping for the work specified. In the invitation to bid for Area 1 in the amount of $10,970 and the alternative bid for Area 2 in the amount of $2,980. Back to either Mr. Welch or Chairperson Usleton.
Do we need two motions? I would assume since we've got two different bids. Is that correct? Or is that a question we need to direct to Mr. Miller?
It's to one, one person, correct? I mean, it's.
For both.
Yes.
It is to one, yes.
So you're saying you're looking at the one motion, Jason, is that, and you think that's what we need to do?
I think it's.
Or break it down in the motion?
I think it's acceptable to be, uh, one motion with, since it's one contractor.
I wa- I would agree with that.
I'm, I'll move that. I'm sorry, go ahead, Clinton.
I agree. That one motion also.
Okay. I, I would recommend and move then that Area 1, uh, 10,970 and Area 2 at 2,980 be awarded to Gary Sisk and Piscine Landscaping.
Jessica, uh, I was going to say Jessica Fogarty, second.
Thank you, Jessica. A motion by Pat Welch, a second by Jessica Fogarty. Uh, Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the board?
Sure, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for that work. Um, also, I wanted to bring it to your attention that, um, Amy Dotson let me know that there was a problem with accessibility at the soccer field. And we, I was immediately in touch with Mr. Ray and that problem is being worked. So Amy, thank you so much for, um, recognizing that and letting us know. I think all of this great work over there is going to make a huge difference. There are so many good things going on over there and we really appreciate it and thank you. Um, every, every month, Building and Grounds, you, the whole team just doing great work and it's a lot and we appreciate you very much.
If, if, is there any questions about my report? Any, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, moving on to policy recommendations. I will do those tonight. Um, the committee has been working, obviously. Um, we, we continue to work. Um, this will be an ongoing process and we finish, when we finish, we'll start all over again. Um, but tonight we have the recommendation, um, we hope the board will adopt the updates to these policies. 4.200, 4.207, 4.209, 4.210, 4.211, 4.400, 4.403, 4.404, 4.502, 4.600, 4.601, 4.603, 4.604, 4.606, 4.700, 4.701, 4.702, 4.801, 6.203, 6.204 and the deletion of 4.401 and 4.5021 on the first and final reading. Is there a motion to recommend?
Jessica. Teresa Lawson, so moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson, a second?
Jessica Fogarty, second.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the board?
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Great. Thank you so much. Lots, lots of good policy work being done and really so. Um, that involves everyone in our system. Um, that Sandy is doing a tremendous job. Um, Amy Johnson and it, depending on where we are in the policy manual, the people that, that are most affected by those at the high school level or middle school level or wherever, though, all of the people are involved. And obviously, Dr. Stevens is involved in, in every, every bit of it. Okay, so on to, um, disciplinary hearing authority appointment. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, speaking of board policy, uh, board policy 6.317 states that annually, the Director of Schools will recommend a three-member discipline hearing authority to the Board of Education for approval. This discipline hearing authority will conduct appeals for students who have been suspended for more than 10 school days. Policy, policy states that at least one member of this group shall be a licensed employee. Administration recommends Dr. April Norris, Mr. Jason Ray and Dr. Shannon Duncan to serve as the discipline hearing authority. Dr. April Norris will serve as the chairperson of the authority. Administration hopes that the board will approve Dr. Norris, Mr. Ray and Dr. Duncan as members of the discipline hearing authority with Dr. Norris serving as the chairperson.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Dr. Norris, Mr. Ray and Dr. Duncan as members of the disciplinary hearing authority?
Pat Welch, so moved.
Motion by Pat. Is there a second?
Teresa Lawson, second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the board?
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Thank you so much. And on to new business. We are ready for, um, the THS reallocation of funds and this will be Mr. Ray.
Thank you again. Um, sometime back, uh, Danielle Bradford, uh, bookkeeper at the high school, came to me about some funds that, uh, she had on her books that had been in dormant accounts for a number of years. And they, these were in restrictive accounts. So for instance, you have in front of you a listing of, uh, five or six clubs, if you will, or funds that have had fun, have had unused funds for a number of years, either because the club is no longer in existence. Or whatever the needs were at that time are no longer needed. In working with our external auditors, Ha- Householder Artman, they've recommended a request to the board, which includes the reason and the desired reallocation of these funds and what account they would be re- reallocated to, to be reviewed and motion taken by the board. Uh, this listing provides the details of the dormant account, the reason for the inactivity and their proposed school activity account, uh, that these balances would transfer into should you approve this request. Danielle has attempted to align the dormant account with an active account as closely as possible. And the moving of these funds will allow them to be used and utilized for our students' needs. Be glad to entertain any questions or Chairperson Usleton.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ray? Do I have a?
I have a question, Kim. And this may be pretty simple and maybe I should have already asked, asked him to find out. That, the, the balance of these together, is that going to be a, what to do with them will be up to the THS staff to determine? Is that what we're authorizing them to do, to use these dormant funds in the way that they would?
It is my. It's my understanding that they're going to be put in a general fund and used as needed. Is that right, Mr. Ray?
That's correct. Um, one, two, uh, four, four of these six funds will be reallocated to the general fund as there's not a matching, if you will.
Right.
Current club or account. The other two, um, and, but these are noted here, uh, in the listing. For instance, the, the old ecology club will roll to a science club fund, uh, for example. So four of the six will roll to a, a general fund and two will go to the closely mirrored current.
I apologize for not reading that bottom section there. Everyone wants explained, excuse me. I, I so moved.
That's okay. Okay, a motion by Pat Welch. Do I have a second?
Jessica Fogarty, second.
A second by Jessica Fogarty. Mrs. Vaughn, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Thank you and really appreciate getting the sheet with the dollar amount and how that was going to be moved or used. Thank you, uh, anyone that was involved in that. I appreciate that. Okay, now we're moving to fall sports. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you so much. So all club sports must be approved by the Board of Education prior to beginning their activities. Policy 4.303 defines club sports as extracurricular athletic activities sponsored by community organizations under the auspices for the Tullahoma City Board of Education. The following club sports are presented for board approval. Elementary level basketball, middle school level bass team, girls soccer, boys and girls cross-country and sixth grade basketball. At the high school level, Tullahoma swimming and the bass team. Administration recommends that the board accept fall club sports as presented.
I have a question and I should know this. Um, what about middle school golf?
That is a great question.
And I'm sorry I didn't notice this before.
That is okay.
Uh, Kim, I think it's the golf, but you may know better than I. I think it's a spring sport.
Um, is that right? Is it spring? Is that the golf spring? See, I get mixed up because one of them is spring, one of them is fall.
It can be confusion because the, the, the Varsity High School is split. One gender plays in the fall, one plays in the spring.
That's correct. That's great. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Question and a good test.
That, and I should know. That's, that's my family sport. Okay, thank you. Um, do we have a motion to accept the fall club sports as presented?
Teresa Lawson, so moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson, a second?
Amy Dotson, second.
A second by Amy Dotson. Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the board?
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill. Sid, are you still with us? Well, I think he got disconnected. He's back on. Sid, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we are voting on fall club sports and the motion was to accept fall club sports as presented. Are you in favor? Sid Hill. Your vote on fall club sports. Chairperson Usleton, I'm afraid we've lost him again.
Okay, um, I think that we'll just, we can move on.
Okay, all right. Teresa Lawson.
Oh, yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welch.
Yes.
That is all in favor.
Okay, thank you so much. Motion for club sports passes. And maybe Sid will be able to join back in, um, shortly. Uh, moving on to suspension of waiting teacup scores. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so on January 21st, 2021, during the first session of the during the first session of the 112th General Assembly, the Tennessee General Assembly took action by passing the Accountability Hold Harmless Law to hold schools, teachers, and students harmless from negative consequences resulting from the 2021 TCAP assessments. For the 2021 school year, districts may choose the percentage that scores from the TCAP assessments will count on students' final grades. The range currently is allowable is anywhere from 0% to 25%. In light of this, and to ensure that students are held harmless in line with this legislation, administration recommends that the percentage that TCAP assessments will count on students' final grades is 0%. Beginning next school year, we will revert back to following percentages stated in Board Policy 4.700, which is 0% for grades 35, 10% for grades 68, and 25% for 912. So the administration does recommend that the TCAP assessments results will count 0% on students' final grades for this 2021 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any motion to accept that TCAP assessment results will count 0% on students' final grade?
Jessica Fogarty, so moved.
Motion by Jessica Fogarty, second.
Sid Hill, second.
Second by Sid Hill. Any discussion? Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the Board?
Yes, Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welsh.
Yes.
That is all in favor.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's report.
Yes, well, you know, this is my favorite part of Board meeting because I enjoy celebrating and acknowledging the wonderful things that are happening in Tullahoma City schools. And as usual, we have much to share and celebrate since last we met. First of all, we have a team of extraordinary educators in Tullahoma City schools. Recently, teachers in each school selected their Teacher of the Year, and I'm thrilled to share with you the 2021 Teachers of the Year. From Bel Air Elementary, Carrie Moore; East Lincoln Elementary, Michelle Wilcox; Jack T. Farah Elementary, Montoy; Robert E. Lee; Emily Judkins; East Middle, Dan Lynch; West Middle, Tim Barendorf; and Tullahoma High School, Allison Brown, Renee Flowers, and Justin Scott. We will be rooting for our three district winners, and I do want to thank Chairperson Usleton for joining me in a celebration where we could deliver yummy chocolates and acknowledge these three district winners. They are, at the elementary level, Michelle Wilcox; at the middle level, Dan Lynch; and at the high school level, Justin Scott. So they now will move forward to compete at the South Central Regional Level. And hopefully, we will continue to have some more winners come out of that competition. Our art teachers recently spent an afternoon putting together art kits for our virtual learners. We are so thankful to have received a grant from the Lillian Ashley Community Foundation to make these art kits a reality for our students. A special thanks to our art teachers for assembling these kits, and to our Coordinated School Health Director Gina Bumbolo for applying for this grant. Arts are a huge part of education in Tullahoma, and it's exciting to have these supplies for our virtual students. Bel Air Elementary Principal Dr. Epley would like to celebrate his great team at Bel Air. He said to me recently, "The faculty and staff at Bel Air Elementary are vigorously working as a team to provide all these with a healthy, safe, and engaging environment for learning." A huge component of this is our amazing nutrition team. We would like to recognize and thank Chris Howard, Shadé Johnson, Barbara Willholt, and Sarah Lemmons for always providing our faculty and students with nutritious meals throughout the day. Bel Air Elementary would also like to celebrate the district champions, the Lady Bee's Basketball Team. These Lady Bees have played an undefeated season, and we are so proud of them. Robert E. Lee Elementary wants to thank their PTO for celebrating Valentine's Day with goodies for their students. Robert E. Lee Principal Mary Gilbert also would like to share that fourth grade teachers at REEL have been working on a presentation where their students were highlighted, sharing their thoughts for the Power of Engagement Summit that was held earlier today and is continuing this week. What Mrs. Gilbert failed to mention in her report, and what I'm excited to share with you, is she was the keynote speaker at this summit today. This virtual summit explored innovative implementation solutions from leaders in social and emotional learning, professional development partners, university partners, educators, and professionals in nonprofit fundraising. During her keynote, Mrs. Gilbert presented on how the team at Robert E. Lee Elementary focuses on the whole child and implements social-emotional learning strategies with great success. I watched her present at, to a group earlier this year during the Tennessee Administrator and School Counselors Conference, and I have to tell you, she did a wonderful job. I know she represented us well, and having spoken with her, I know she's gotten some great feedback from today's session. East Middle Principal Dr. Woody Dillahay would like to celebrate eight students that tested out of eighth-grade I Ready. He shares, "We greatly appreciate the support of our ELA teachers, Julie Costa and Tara Litchford, and reading specialist Lori Arnett. We're proud of the hard work these students have demonstrated and look forward to seeing more students complete these personalized learning opportunities that are offered through the I Ready program." Congratulations to the, these East Middle eighth graders. And by the way, I got to meet two of these young ladies and spend some time with them and personally congratulate them, which was extra special today as I was spending the day there. So congratulations to Claire Fogarty, Audrey Sarabi, Bella Harris, Leila Cunningham, Lindsay Evie, Mia Van der Vliet, Seth Vaughn, and Jay Clements. And we are excited to celebrate the THS welding program. This program has earned the Tennessee Pathways Certification. The Tennessee Pathways Certification is a partnership with the Tennessee Board of Regents and establishes standards for providing quality programming and design. I would like to give a huge shout out to these following folks. Our Tullahoma High School CTE Director, Dr. Sherri Zimmerman; our welding instructor, Jerry Green; and our THS Guidance Counselor, Jessie Kinsey, for their exceptional work in providing this quality program design and instruction, and for working through the lengthy application process to ensure we met the criteria to earn this status. And now on to a winter sports update. On the middle school level, West Boys are the CTC Basketball Champions, with the East Boys being the runner-up. The East Boys, East Girls, and West Girls chose to enter the TMSAA Small School Region Tournament, trying to advance to the TMSAA State Tournament. The West Girls advanced to the Region Consolidation Game. Middle School Bowling has started their spring session. Our high school winter sports are progressing to their district and region tournaments. Our boy wrestlers won the district for the ninth year in a row. And did I say that? Yes, I did, ninth year in a row. And did compete in the region last weekend and qualified two wrestlers for the upcoming state tournament. Our girls wrestling team has qualified four wrestlers for their state tournament. Let's wish our girls and boys good luck as they compete in the state tournament this Thursday and Friday. Our girls basketball team has captured second in the district in the regular season. Our boys team will be the fourth in district regular season. A win last night means the boys will play in the district semifinals tomorrow night in Columbia. Girls will host Lawrence County in the district semifinals on Wednesday. Both teams have now qualified for the region tournament beginning next Monday. Bowling is complete, with our girls bowling team making it to the state semifinals. With the COVID numbers going down statewide, our swim team is hoping to begin their competition in the very near future. Middle school spring sports will begin their season next Monday, March 1st, while our high school spring sports are in their preseason. Onto a few other items to report. The Board recently approved a contract with Orkut Winslow to provide assessments of each of our campuses. Their work, which was slated to begin last Tuesday, but was delayed due to weather, actually began yesterday, and they completed walkthroughs at three of our campuses, Bel Air, Farah, and West Middle. They're scheduled to begin round two of their walkthroughs tomorrow. So we will plan to schedule a study, study session in the coming weeks to review their findings once that final report of all facilities is ready. Now, we know that will take a few weeks to complete after all seven of their visits are done. And as you know, the COVID vaccine phases have now moved to 1B, where teachers and staff are now eligible to get the vaccine. We are very excited to be partnering with the Coffee County Health Department to have our teachers and staff who wish to be vaccinated have that taken care of at our high school tomorrow afternoon. Major kudos to Gina Bumbolo, our Coordinated School Health Director, who has done an amazing job planning for, organizing, scheduling, and communicating all details about this vaccination event. Not to mention doing an exceptional job working on this with Darla Sane, the nursing supervisor at the Coffee County Health Department in Tullahoma, and Pam Browning, the Public Health County Director with the Department of Health. So proud of this collaborative effort. And I look forward to getting my vaccination tomorrow, along with over 200 others that will be joining, so I can't wait. And before we meet again, unbelievably, our students and teachers will enjoy spring break. This year's spring break will be held from Friday, March 12th through Friday, March 19th. I'm hoping all will enjoy a much-needed time of rest, relaxation, and rejuvenation as we return for the remaining months of the school year. Thank you for allowing me to present this lengthy report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. Wow, so many wonderful things going on. And she did say in her report that the, that the Orkut Winslow findings would be a study session. So we will be having a study session probably in March, later in March. Thank you all so much. And now, Alder Person, Rupa Blackwell.
Can y'all see me?
Yes.
I can't see myself, so I have no idea, and there's a lot going on in the background. So there's actually a lot for me to give to you guys today. Couple of things I'm going to start with is regarding the Planning Commission meeting a week and a half ago. That, at that meeting, the possibility of a annexation came before the Planning Commission for 15 acres out on the Avoca Lake area. We did approve to, the resolution to move forward with the BOMA to start looking at how to do that, what that will look like, bringing city services out there. I sent that to Dr. Stevens, so she knows about that as well. And I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. I think it looks like with 15 acres divided into three, probably per acre, houses per acres, you're looking at around 45 homes. So just giving that to you guys as well. Also, at the city board meeting on Monday, we voted to begin, to approve to begin discussions with Mr., oh heck, why am I losing? He owns the property at Avoca and Riley Creek Road, that little triangle. He brought it to the Planning Commission to, to, Mr. Howard. He brought it to the Planning Commission to subdivide it, and we postponed it to get some more information. And during that time, the city is going to, brought it to us, us to the city board to go into negotiates, negotiations to purchase it. I personally think that this will be fantastic for our city. There's been some wastewater and floodwater issues, not wastewater, floodwater issues in that area in the past, and I think some safety issues. I hope that that will allow us to get our kids safer to school out there. Because we know people have a tendency to drive too fast on that road, and this might help us out. Silver Street and Jefferson Street Parks are still moving forward slowly. Lots of things haven't been able to happen with this, with the weather the way it is over the winter break. I'm also want to give you guys a heads up, we are building a new website. We did approve that last night to move forward with a contract with a company called Civic, Civic Engage. And they will be putting together our, our new website. It will also include TAEDC on it. The Parks Department will be brought into it, public works. So there's a lot of good things with it, and it will be fully ADA accessible, which to me is something we are desperately needing with our website now, and for it to be navigatable. So, because right now, I don't really feel like it is. I'm actually going into the school system starting tomorrow. I was supposed to do it last week to talk to seventh and eighth grade students. Tomorrow, I'll be at, with seventh graders at East from 8:00 to 1:00 discussing healthy relationships. What, you know, it, it's Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and I think one of the things that we can do to set kids up for success is for them to know what healthy relationships look like with their friends, to know what issues and, and red flags to look for in those relationships, and how to discuss and disagree appropriately. So looking forward to going into the school system and discussing that tomorrow. It's a tough conversation, and I, I tell you, the things that come from these seventh graders always surprised me last year. So, you know, they had really good questions, really deep questions and concerns, and, you know, the level of their thinking, I really don't think I was like that in seventh grade. So kudos to you all for raising them that way. I wanted to reach out to someone, I'll, I'll send an email to Sandy as, as well. Alderman McGee is looking at putting together an Easter egg hunt that will be separate from the other ones that are going on, that she wanted to put flyers in the school system. So I'll reach out to, to school administration separately about that, but that will be coming out as well. The Arts Council, last night, we did vote to approve more funding to the Arts Council. So stay tuned for the things that they're planning on doing. I know that part of that funding is hopefully to have that outdoor area at South Jackson finished up so that then we can have more COVID-friendly arts activities out there, shows, programs, et cetera. I'm really excited for that. And also just wanted to say thank you to the Tullahoma High School staff for giving, and also the school, the student body president for giving me and Mayor Noss a tour about two weeks ago of the school. I can't, I can't get over how much has changed there, not in terms of the way it looks, but in terms of all the different capabilities that our, our high school has now. You know, I went to the drafting lab, is what I'm, and it's completely different from what it was before. So it's just, it's just a testament to how much our school system has grown, how much we've kept up with, with what the, the changing dynamics and technology out there. And I was just really excited to see that, so I just want to say thank you for that. And that's it, if y'all have questions for me.
Thank you so much. Lots of great things going on. I did see the presentation about the city's website. It is really, really excellent. And I am hopeful that you all will have a dropdown for our schools or something. A connection on there is, do you know if there's going to be that capability?
I'm sure that we'll be able to link it. I don't, because I'm like, you'd have to build the entire y'all's website into ours, but I can see dropdown for us. Because if we are going to, one of the good things about this website is it's going to be able to run Google Analytics. So we'll be able to tell who's coming in from where to look at this. So as we're seeing the growth in our town from outside areas, we'll know, you know, if it is actually from people outside of the community. And if so, we definitely want to link that, I think, so that they can look at the school system, because I think our school system is one of the biggest draws to our area.
Well, we think so too. So, yes, absolutely, that's great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Alder Person Blackwell? Thank you so much.
And I'm going to jump off. My parents are in town for the last couple of days, so I'm going to have a drink with them before they move, so.
Yes, thank you.
Bye, y'all.
Okay, Personnel Report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, so personnel changes for February were included in your board packet for review.
Great, thank you so much. And our last item is our monthly financial report. Mr. Ray?
Thank you. You have provided in your packet a summary through the end of January where we stand in the current budget cycle. There's nothing extraordinary or out of line. we stand in the current budget cycle. There's nothing extraordinary or out of line that I'd need to point out to you. Would be open to any questions that you might have, though.
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Again, Mr. Ray, thank you. This monthly report, I think, is super important, and I think it's very helpful. When you're just seeing the big report a few times a year, it's a lot, but getting to keep up month to month is great. So thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sid Hill, so moved.
A motion by Sid Hill. Do I have a second?
Jessica Fogarty, second.
A second by Jessica Fogarty. Mrs. Vaughn, would you please poll the board?
I would be glad to. Amy Dotson.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Kim Usleton.
Yes.
And Pat Welsh.
Yes.
That is all in favor.
Thank you all so much. Meeting is adjourned.